Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first and only regularly scheduled meeting for the month of June. This is the month that we go to one meeting a month in June, one in July. As the paper passes tonight, there'll be no meetings in August, then one in September, two in October, one in November, one in December. Now, it doesn't mean there can't be two meetings. If there is a need for a second meeting, they can call a special meeting on the fourth Monday of the month. Whether that will happen or not, who knows? But what does tonight hold for us? Well, let's take a look. We've got 11 items on the consent agenda, 32 appointments and reappointments, and three items on a regular agenda, but boy, is that gonna change. So, let's get started right now and run down the agenda for you as it stands. Starting with the consent agenda, item number one, ordinance 2013-205, special use at 705 79 Libby Avenue for the purpose of a bank with a drive-up facility and accessory parking. That's being continued till October 13th. Item two, ordinance 2014-94, and this is special use at 1619 and 1620 West Broad Street. That's being continued till July 14th, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number three, ordinance 2014-118, authorizing and accepting funds of $5,406 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for the purpose of upgrading the city's burn building program to enhance the safety of fire service personnel while conducting live fire training. That is being continued until July 14th. Now, item four, ordinance 2014-119, declaring a public necessity exists for a parcel of property located on 26th and 27th between S Street and T Street for the purpose of constructing an alley running between S Street and T Street in the block bounded by 26th, T, 27th, S. That stays on consent. Item five, authorizing the CEO to accept $501,190 from VDOT. That's for the purpose of funding the 25th Street and Nine Mile Road Roundabout Project at 25th and Nine Mile Road. That stays on consent. Item six, ordinance 2014-123, and that amends the fiscal year 2013-14 general fund budget by transferring funds from various agencies and non-departmental programs, appropriating such transferred funds to various agencies and non-departmental programs. Those are moving some money around, but staying within budgets. Item seven, ordinance 2014-124, that amends the funds which appropriates and provides funds for financing the school budget of the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2013, ending June 30th this year for the purpose of appropriating additional funds. That stays on the consent agenda. Item number eight, ordinance 2014-132, public necessity exists to authorize acquisition of fee simple interest for right-of-way purposes of temporary easement at the intersection of Brooklyn Park Boulevard, Dill Avenue, Second Avenue, Meadow Bridge Road for the purpose of constructing the Brooklyn Park Boulevard Roundabout Project. That stays on consent. Item number nine, resolution 2013-R254, supporting the administration's efforts to settle certain claims asserted by certain owners of real property abutting in Princeton Creek in the city. That's being continued till September 8th. Item 10, resolution 2013-R278, requesting the CEO pursue on behalf of the city the designation of Lumpkin's Jail as a national historic landmark, and thereafter pursue the collective designation of Lumpkin's Jail, Slave Trail, Burial Ground, known as Richmond's African Burial Ground, and the respective grounds of each located within the area of the city of Richmond known as Shackle Bottom as a United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization World Heritage Site. That is staying on the consent agenda. And item 11, resolution 2014-R83, and that will dispense with the regular meetings of council during the month of August of this year. That is staying on consent as well. Okay, we have a lot of appointments and reappointments, so rather than put them all on the screen, we're just gonna run through them here very quickly. Item 12 appoints Ross K. Arrington, member of the Social Services Advisory Board. Item 13 appointing Sandra M. Antoine, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Item 14 appointing Madge Bemis, member of the Urban Forestry Commission. 15 appointing Wayne Blanks, member of the Board of Directors of Richmond Behavioral Health Authority. 27 appointing Stacia Codadec as member of the Social Services Advisory Board. Item 28 appointing Kristen Larson, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. That one's being continued until our next meeting on July 14th. Item 29 appointing Julia Martin, member of the Sister Cities Commission. 30, this one is appointing Michelle Mosby, member of the Citizen Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration. 31, appointing Michelle Mosby, member of the Social Services Advisory Board. 32, appointing Eric Payne as a member of the Advisory Board for the Assessment of Towing Fees and Storage of Vehicles. 33, appointing Rodney Poole, member of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. 34, appointing Charles Price, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. 35, appointing Charles Price, member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. 36, appointing Garrett S. Pryor, member of the Citizen Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration. That paper has been withdrawn at the request of the appointee. 16, let's see, here we go now. We appoint Susan Ella Boer, member of the Sister Cities Commission, appointing Barbara Branch, member of the Clean City Commission, reappointing Ramon Brinkman, member of the Audit Committee, reappointing Jonathan Coleman, member of the Board of Commissioners of Richmond Redevelopment and Housing. Next item is appointing Kevin Connor, member of the Advisory Board for the Assessment of Towing Fees and the Storage of Vehicles. Next item, appointing Justin Cotten as a member of the Clean City Commission. Next item appoints Aaron L. Dixon as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Then we appoint N. Maurice Holmes, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Next item appoints Nathan Hughes, member of the Commission of Architectural Review. Then there's a reappointment of Linda C. Jackson Shaw, member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond, and appointing Tony Johnson, member of the Citizen Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration. Now, I told you there's a bunch of them, up to item number 37, appointing Arsilias Redding, member of the Clean City Commission. Number 38, reappointing Noel Shaw Bell, member of the Board of Directors of Richmond Behavioral Health Authority. 39, appointing Jacqueline Stone, member of the Board of Trustees of Richmond Retirement System. Number 40, appointing, reappointing Julian Williams, as a member of the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. 41, appoints William Gerald Willis, member of the Board of Fire Appeals. 42, appointing Davida Willis, member of the Clean City Commission, and 42, appointing Shannon Wilson Gonzalez, member of the Citizen Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration. Now, those are the appointments and reappointments, and we have three items on the regular agenda. Item 44, ordinance 2014-71, to close the public use and travel, a portion of right-of-way known as East Carey Street, located in the block bounded by Pear Street, East Main Street, Peach Street, and East Dock Street, and consisting of 1,973 plus or minus square feet upon certain terms and conditions. That's being continued until July 14th. Item 45, and this is the Libby Hill Condos Project, ordinance 2014-78, that's a special use, 2801 East Main and a portion of 2823 East Main and a portion of East Carey Street for the purpose of permitting a multifamily dwelling of up to 65 dwelling units and principal uses. This one is going to be amended tonight and continued until our next meeting in July. So, there'll be no public hearing on this tonight. They will introduce the amendments, and then they'll continue the paper until July 24th. And then, item number 46, resolution 2013-205, requesting the School Board provide the council with a three-year plan to improve academic achievement for all students, inform the council concerning anticipated operating and capital costs to carry out the plan. Now, that paper has been withdrawn. So, where do we stand now? Okay, started out with 11 items on the consent agenda, four continued, one withdrawn. We're down to six items on consent. Appointments and reappointments, we had 23 appointments, so we now have only 21 because one was withdrawn, one was continued, and we have nine reappointments, so we go down there to 30. Then on the regular agenda, three papers, one withdrawn, one continued, one amended to continue, so basically we have no papers on the regular agenda, so we are down to 30 appointments and reappointments and six items on the consent agenda. However, we do have a whole bunch of expedited consideration papers that will come before us tonight. Whether they will be done in a block or individually, we don't know as yet. Citizens Comment Period, four speakers tonight, State of the City, concerns about building a baseball stadium over improving city schools. E. Martin Jewell, Marty Jewell, former council member, and this says he's coming to praise members of council. And then one fourth, a fourth speaker is on Shackle Stadium. Those are the speakers tonight in Citizens Comment Period. And one under awards and presentations, and this is to celebrate, honor, and recognize the life, work, and importance of Maggie Walker, and that will be her 150th anniversary. So, that is what we are looking at for tonight. And the President of the Council is now saying that they are going to be continuing the paper on the Pear Street project, Libby Hill project, so that will be continued, and he's announcing now that that is not going to be taking place tonight, that there'll be no public hearing on it. So, we'll be getting started in just a minute, but before we do, I would like to express my condolences to the loss of a man who was a very important man in this city for many in the community, Mr. Ray Boone, the founder, publisher of the Richmond Free Press. I have known Mr. Boone for many, many years. First met him when I was working with the State Fair of Virginia. We were on a first-name basis, we were friends, we did not always agree on everything, and that's, that to me, I think is a good thing. We had our own opinions on several things, we could talk back and forth on them. He would say sometimes, "Well, Dick, I can see your point, but I can't agree with it." And I would say the same thing to Ray, but he was a good man, he was a very good man. Did a good job with his newspaper, presented the views of the city, and used the editorial space to present his views as well, which is the way it's supposed to be with newspapers. Mr. Boone, you will be missed by a great, great many people. You left many people here behind, and my thoughts and prayers are out to Gene Boone, his wife, and to his family, and we just say, "Thank you, Mr. Boone, for a job well done. You will be missed." We'll be getting started in just a minute with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
We're gonna go ahead and call this formal meeting of Richmond City Council to order. And I'd like to start tonight with a moment of silence. As you all probably read last week, the editor of the Richmond Free Press, Ray Boone, passed away. He was a wonderful man, and I was fortunate to have my path cross his several times over the last five years. I left every conversation with Mr. Boone a better person for having had it. I know there's gonna be others that are gonna be able to eulogize him better than what I've said, but I would ask for a moment of silence to remember a man who's made a lasting imprint on the city of Richmond. Thank you. Now, Reverend Samuel Patterson of the Holy Rosary Catholic Church of our street will be providing our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. For God, we come to offer a word of thanks for your goodness and your mercy, as we come together to promote the well-being of the people of Richmond. Bless the process as well as the product. Give us a blessing so that our words and action are in one unity, and that we are able to listen to each other, and in doing so, we shall with good heart walk hand in hand to face the future, and continue to give us wisdom and courage that we need. It is in your precious name we pray and give thanks. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please provide everyone with the chamber emergency evacuation plan and the citizen speaker guidelines?
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assess visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or citizen comment periods have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to, campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Mr. President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening.
Thank you very much. I know we have a number of appointments and reappointments tonight. May we please move to this?
Sure. For the appointments and reappointments, when I call your name, would you please stand? First, it's item number 12, resolution number 2014-R84, to appoint Ross K. Arrington to the Social Services Advisory Board for a term terminating January 11th, 2018. Resolution 2014-R85, to appoint Sandra M. Antoine to the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating June 9th, 2017. Resolution number 2014-R86, to appoint Madge Bemis to the Urban Forestry Commission for a term terminating July 25th, 2017. Item 15, resolution number 2014-R87, to reappoint Wayne Blanks to the Board of Directors for the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority for a term terminating July 1, 2017. Item 16, resolution number 2014-R88, to appoint Susan Ella Boer to the Sister Cities Commission for a term terminating October 24th, 2014. Item 17, resolution number 2014-R89, to appoint Barbara R. Branch to the Clean City Commission for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Item 18, resolution number 2014-R90, to reappoint Raymond M. Brinkman to the Audit Committee for a term terminating July 25th, 2017. Item 19, resolution number 2014-R91, to reappoint Jonathan Coleman to the Board of Commissioners of the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a term terminating August 26th, 2018. Item 20, resolution number 2014-R92, to appoint Kevin Connor to the Advisory Board of Assessment of Towing Fees and the Storage of Vehicles for a term terminating May 24th, 2016. Item 21, resolution number 2014-R93, to appoint Justin M. Coughton to the Clean City Commission for a term terminating October 25th, 2014. Item 22, resolution number 2014-R94, to appoint Aaron L. Dixon to the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating June 9th, 2017. Item 23, resolution number 2014-R95, to appoint N. Maurice Holmes to the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating June 9th, 2017. Item 24, resolution number 2014-R96, to reappoint Nathan Hughes to the Commission of Architectural Review for a term terminating July 31st, 2017. Item 25, resolution number 2014-R97, to reappoint Linda C. Jackson Shaw to the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond for a term terminating June 27th, 2017. Resolution number, item number 26, resolution number 2014-R98, to appoint Tony S. Johnson to the Citizen Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration for a term terminating June 9th, 2016. Item 27, resolution number 2014-R99, to appoint Stacia R. Codadec to the Social Services Advisory Board for a term terminating June 22nd, 2017. Item number 28, resolution number 2014-R100, will be continued later this evening to July the 14th. Item 29, resolution number 2014-R101, to appoint Julia Martin to the Sister Cities Commission for a term terminating March 22nd, 2016. Item 30, resolution number 2014-R102, to appoint Michelle Mosby to the Citizens Advisory Board on Alternatives to Incarceration for a term terminating June 9th, 2016. Item 31, resolution number 2014-R103, to appoint Michelle Mosby to the Social Services Advisory Board for a term terminating, terminating March 26th, 2016. Item 32, resolution number 2014-R104, to appoint Eric Payne to the Assessment of Towing Fees and the Storage of Vehicles for a term terminating May 24th, 2016. Item 33, resolution number 2014-R105, to appoint Rodney Poole to the Richmond Planning, Richmond Regional Planning District Commission for a term terminating March 31st, 2015. Item 34, resolution number 2014-R106, to appoint Charles Price to the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating June 9th, 2017. Item 35, resolution number 2014-R107, to appoint Charles Price to the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Item 36, resolution number 2014-R108, has been withdrawn. Item number 37, resolution number 2014-R109, to reappoint Arsilias Redding to the Clean City Commission for a term terminating March 22nd, 2016. Item 38, resolution number 2014-R110, to reappoint Noel Shaw Bell to, to the Board of Directors for the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority for a term terminating July 1st, 2017. Item 39, resolution number 2014-R111, to reappoint Jacqueline E. Stone to the Board of Trustees of the Richmond Retirement System for a term terminating March 28th, 2017. Item 40, resolution number 2014-R112, to reappoint Julian H. Williams to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Commission to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for a term terminating April 22nd, 2016. Item 41, resolution number 2014-R113, to appoint William Gerald Willis to the Board of Fire Appeals for a term terminating February 28th, 2016. Item 14, resolution number 2014-R114, to appoint Davida Willis, Davida Willis, to the Clean City Commission for a term terminating July 25th, 2015. And item 43, resolution number 2014-R115, to appoint Shannon A. Wilson Gonzalez, Shannon A. Wilson Gonzalez, oh, okay, to the Citizens Advisory Commission on Alternatives to Incarceration for a term terminating June 9th, 2016. Those are all of the appointments. Those are all of the appointment and reappointment papers for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight who are not being appointed to something? That joke went flat. Well, at any rate, for those of you who are here to volunteer your time in service on behalf of our city, we thank you for your willingness to serve, for the time and dedication that you're going to put in or have been putting into this. At this point, after the public comments and the vote is taken, if you'll see the gentleman in the bow tie waving his hand in the back-left corner, he'll take you to the Clerk's office where he'll perform the oath of office. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to any of these appointments? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of any of these appointments? Bringing it back to council for any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Yes, council is voting on tonight's reappointment and appointment papers as presented. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Folks, thank you again for your willingness to serve. Mr. Rawls will escort you to the Clerk's office where he'll perform the oath of office. I believe we've got to the point in our lives now where it's time to do awards and presentations. Madam Clerk, we have one, is that correct?
That is correct. Tonight's recognition being presented by Third District Counselor Chris Hilbert recognizes the 150th anniversary of the birth of Maggie L. Walker. Born in Richmond, Virginia on July 15th, 1864, Miss Maggie Lena Draper Michelle Walker was an African-American civic leader, teacher, banker, social activist, and entrepreneur. Throughout her life, Miss Walker broke color barriers and gender barriers of her time in providing and promoting social, racial, gender, and economic success on behalf of the African-Americans... African-Americans and women. Miss Walker was the first African-American woman to establish and become president of a bank in the United States, establish a newspaper for the bank, and open the St. Luke Emporium, a department store located at 112 East Broad Street in Richmond. Throughout her life, Miss Walker served critical roles in supporting, creating, and providing leadership for numerous civic organizations during the late 19th century and early 20th century. In recognition of her significant accomplishments, success, and contributions, Miss Walker's home, located on Lee Street in Richmond's Jackson Ward neighborhood, is an official U.S. historic... national historic site that is managed and maintained by the U.S. National Park Service. Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby commemorate the occasion of the 150th anniversary of Miss Walker's birth and call this observance to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, those gathered. It's my honor to... with the mayor, this is an official joint proclamation commemoration where we're celebrating the 150th birthday of Maggie Walker, a significant Richmond-er. July the 15th, from this day forward, will be recognized as Maggie Walker Day in the city of Richmond. And it's hard to say anything new about Miss Walker. She was an incredible person. For those that don't know her story, I would suggest that you find it if you want to be inspired. An African-American woman, and that's certainly not lost on me, that she was able to blaze all of these trails with all the odds against her. Many folks have said that gender bias has been very difficult for them over their lives, but to imagine that over 100 years ago... Now, we were just commenting earlier, we have the first majority female council that we've ever had, and she certainly blazed a lot of trails, so... And certainly, this gentleman in front of me, Melvin Jones, President of the Alumni Association for Maggie Walker High, has been instrumental in making sure that no one forgets Maggie Walker and the contributions that she's made. We are developing a statue to be placed in the city in her honor, and in no small measure to your determination, Melvin, thank you for keeping us on task. And so, July the 15th, we'll be having a celebration at the historic site there on Lee Street. And so, with that, I want to turn it over to Madam Vice President, who is representing the mayor this evening in this joint proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert, and to the President and members of City Council and to all of those present this afternoon. There's a lot that can be added and a lot that can be said. This is a... certainly is a fabulous... We're fortunate in Richmond that she was here and that her history is here and what we've experienced. When we were in the process of working on the anti-poverty initiatives and talking about, you know, what is it, who is the model that we want to hope that the initiative to address poverty in the city of Richmond, and Magell Walker was the person that all of those persons that were working and volunteering with us to put forth an initiative recognized that she exemplified the type of leadership... Her economic development that was... that took place in the city of Richmond because of her leadership, the principles that she used as it relates to... that she left and shared with how we use our money, that it works for us. And certainly, Mr. Jones, I'm sure she smiles, to have a new son for who you have been for Richmond on her behalf and your consistency of making sure that this wonderful legacy of the city of Richmond is honored, that is honored in the respectful way that it deserves to be honored. And certainly, we would probably not be where we are today without your leadership and your determination that Miss Walker is recognized by Richmond as she should be. So I too would like to thank you for the work that you have done to make this a reality. And I'm grateful, on behalf of the mayor and City Council, that this day, July the 15th, will always be a historic day in the city of Richmond. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris. I really appreciate it. Thanks. First of all, I want to thank each councilperson, council liaison, City Clerk's office, City Attorney, just everybody in general, people of the city of Richmond. You know, a lot of people ask me, why did I get involved with Maggie Walker? I was a graduate of Maggie Walker in '71. I was a two-term president of the Alumni Association, and then I was first vice president. Now I've took over the task of president of the national statue of Maggie Walker. So, you know, that's what I'm doing now, and it's going to be a big thing when we add a statue building Richmond. I'm sorry I couldn't have everybody here tonight. There's so much going on in the city, graduations, and, you know, a lot of people, the Maggie Walker family, one of those is not here because of graduation. But I'll get this to the Maggie Walker family and let them know what's going on, too. And this would be shared at the Maggie Walker House on Maggie Walker's birthday. Also, they're having something, I believe it's the 12th, that's Saturday before the 15th, so it's going to be one that we're going to invite everybody to... So, thank you, City Council, all city leaders, Clerk's office, and I just can't say no more. City Attorney, I just want to thank everybody for what they've done and working with everybody for all these many years down here. I really thank you for what I've been doing. And I'm also check with Eric Cantor and all the congresspeople. Next, you'll be seeing more of this in Maggie Walker nationally, trust me. Thank you. Thanks again, Chris. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes our awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any amendments or agenda items that need to be changed?
Yes, Mr. President, amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2013-205, will be continued to the October 13th council meeting. Item 2, ordinance number 2014-94, and Item 3, ordinance number 2014-118, will be continued to the July 14th council meeting. Item 9, Resolution Number 2013-R254, will be continued to the September 8th council meeting. Item 28, Resolution Number 2014-R100, will be continued to the July 14th council meeting. Item 36, Resolution Number 2014-R108, has been withdrawn. Item 44, ordinance number 2014-71, will be continued to the July 14th council meeting. Item 45, ordinance number 2014-78, will be amended and continued to the July 14th council meeting later tonight. Item 46, Resolution Number 2013-R205, has been withdrawn. Mr. President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
I'll need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Counselor Hilbert, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on tonight's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. If there is no objection by unanimous consent, I'd like to amend the agenda slightly to now go to public comment.
Okay, the first speaker is L. Shirley Harvey.
Hello, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening. My name is L. Shirley Harvey. My telephone number is 232-4832, and my website is LshurleyHarvey.com. Psalm 127 says, "Except the Lord build a house; they labor in vain that built it. Except the Lord keep the city; the watchman waketh but in vain." Dwight Jones says he wants to build a better Richmond. As the Word of God says, Dwight Jones labors in vain. The people of Richmond should be your prime colleagues because it is we who you are paid to serve. It is we who you should consult. It is we who you should make known your intentions. Yet we are the ones you ignore and violate our constitutional rights. We too have ideas, desires, and plans for this city. We live here, and we are not going anywhere. You do not respond to Mr. Poole, who continues to explain to you how the water bills are unfair, and yet you do nothing about it. Ilya Davis has a plan and a project that will reduce poverty in Richmond, yet you pay him no attention. The way you treat us is unjust, but the God I serve is a God of justice. He will not let you continue to work against us. So I forgive you for your misfeasance, malfeasance, and non-feasance as God commands, and I hope you change your ways. But in the meantime, I will pray for justice because you have done so much to hurt us. So I pray. Father Yahweh, I thank you for this opportunity. You, Father, are Lord of everything, including this council, this mayor, and this city. You are the only God to which nothing is impossible, and it is Your will that we live in peace and prosperity. How great and loving You are, Lord, I ask You now in front of all these people, that You make this city the city of refuge that You so ordained, and give us the people the justice You provided. I ask You to bring these leaders in submission to Your Word so that everyone is properly served. You said that if I ask anything in Your name, You will give it to me. So I ask, in the name of Yahshua, that You awaken the people of this city to action, that You give them courage to speak up. You said that there are 7,000 more people in this city who are Your warriors. Lord, let us now stand together on Your Word and declare that this city is justly served. It's free of corruption. It's free of favoritism, free of liars, free of cheating, free of nepotism, free of bribery, free of misuse of our monies, free of self-service who just want to be mayor or president of council, free of thieves, free of mismanagement, free of poverty, free of misuse of our lands, free to serve those in need, free to teach and hire our own, free of overpayment for fees and utilities, free to live in peace and joy, free of government officials who do not serve us, free of mayors who are serving just to be seen for the next political position, free of crime, free of lack, free of ignorance, free of any sham development in Chaco Bottom, free to allow every willing person to take part in our government. Lord, let justice reign in the city of Richmond, Virginia.
Ma'am, you've gone over your time. I've given you additional 30 seconds. Would you like to summarize, please?
Yes, Father, this is a prayer.
We still only have three minutes.
Father, you are not a man that you should lie. I confess that you... that justice thrives for every man and woman and every boy and girl in the city of Richmond so that this day, June 9th, 2014, is forever remembered as the day Yahweh, God Almighty, changed Richmond. So let it be done.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Shamiz Epps.
Ms. Epps? All right, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is E. Martin Jewell.
I haven't seen Mr. Jewell tonight. Is anybody? No? Well, we'll hold those two in advance. If they show up later on, maybe we'll come back to them.
Okay, next speaker is John Rowley.
Mr. Rowley, thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Unfortunately, I'm down here tonight again because of the proposed Chaco Stadium. I thought it was truly dead when it was withdrawn at the last council meeting, and now I'm reading in the newspaper that, no, it's coming back, and there's more facts we haven't heard yet, and it's going to be reconsidered, or it should be reconsidered. Please, let me caution you, do not reconsider this plan again. It was discredited under Mayor Wilder. It would have been rejected last week under Mayor Jones. Let's move forward. This plan would need to go down the list of what's wrong with this plan. I talked to some councilpersons, and they said, well, the moral obligation would be less under the mayor's plan. $200 million to rectify the flood plain, $3.5 million additional purchase to buy the land that the Democratic National Party holds. There's so many incredible costs to this that depend on a second location working out. It's the most irresponsible financial plan I've ever heard, and for the councilpersons that do not listen to their constituents and to go forward with them, then, well, there's still time to get it right before Election Day. So please, let's come forward with a plan on the diamond location which two-thirds of Richmonders want, and it's much better financially, physically responsible to the Richmond taxpayers than the mayor's folly. Thank you.
Ms. Epps? Mr. Jewell? Mr. Jewell? Pleasure to see you tonight, sir.
Good evening, one and all. I'm so sorry to run late. We just lost a giant in Ray Boone, and his wake is going on, and I'm just coming from there. Good evening, everybody. I came to praise you tonight. I know I fuss a lot, but I and so many other people in this city thank the five of you who have chosen to say no right now for this ballpark in the bottom. It has stirred up this city, and maybe that's what the city needs, to be stirred up. Government can't work well until the people are in it. And sadly, we've sat on the sidelines and watched government, tra-la-la, going down the garden path for a few of us coming down before you, inputting into this democracy. Well, we got it in spades this last time around, and we thank you. My only request beyond that, however, is that you put a stake in its heart by either... by either passing your resolution, Mr. President, to put a referendum and let the people decide what should go on down in that property. what should go on down in that property, in that bottom. Very valuable piece of property that I suspect that if we took proper care, we could generate a presentation and an attraction that would far exceed revenue than any ballpark could ever bring us. We know that ballparks all over the country never pay a return on its investments. We know that $1.7 million of rent is one-third of the cost of the annual cost of that mortgage note, that the flying squirrels, who are wonderful, we love the squirrels, but nobody in this city, certainly you all, never promised anybody a ballpark. That was RMA if it was anybody, which represents three municipalities, not Richmond. When do we get off thinking that we're so rich that we can provide entertainment for our county neighbors for free? It's a bit insane when they, just this past fall, had on their ballot a referendum to increase taxes to pay for their schools, and our schools are falling down all around our children. This is insane. And so while we can have all the arguments and inputs from the mayor that he wants to present, nothing can get around the fact that you can't build a ballpark and fix the schools at the same time? We don't have that much borrowing capacity. And so, again, we thank you for bringing common sense to government, and we, the opposition, stand ready to back you all the way. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I just make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Trammell?
Marty, thank you for coming down tonight. You know, you brought up about the surrounding counties. I've been hearing from a lot of people in Chesapeake and Himariko. They said because of so much opposition from the citizens in Richmond, and if this was to happen, which we pray that it doesn't, they're not coming down here. They said they would be too afraid to come down here because of all the opposition that has been. And how do you take a sacred burial ground and put the ballpark there? That's what the citizens in Chesapeake and Himariko, not only the citizens of Richmond, but that's what they have been saying for the past four months.
It is the worst desecration to even think, to even insult us with an idea that we should put a ballpark down there, when we know so little about what is there, except we know, what we do know is there's a ton of what we don't know. If we explored, we could unearth, and we could, in fact, celebrate and invite the whole world to Richmond at a tourism fee to visit that place there. I was in Ghana, West Africa, for some while back in the mid-'90s. They've got the Elmina slave castle. Busloads upon busloads are driving up to that place to visit that dreadful place, that historical place, and there's no reason why we treat this right. We could do the same thing and enhance the level of tourism that is way behind the eight ball in Richmond with all the history that we've got. And so, you're absolutely right. Not only that, I've had too many friends from the counties and the city who said, look, I'm not taking my 10-year-old kid to the bottom to a night game that has extra innings. We don't get out of there until 10, 11 o'clock at night in the bottom where they're shooting and carrying on. I mean, that's the perception of that area.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
So you're absolutely right. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on from, I'm sorry, is Ms. Epps, did she show up by any chance?
Shamiz Epps?
Yes. Doesn't appear to have. Okay. Let's move on, if we could. I know we don't have a regular agenda, so we can cross that off our left with some ease. And may we please move to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item four, ordinance number 2014-119, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of certain fee simple interests and permanent easements for constructing an alley running between S. and T. Streets bounded by 26th, 27th, and S. Streets. Item five, ordinance number 2014-120, to authorize the CAO to accept $501,109 from VDOT and to appropriate the amount to the Department of Public Works for funding the 25th Street and Nine Mile Road Roundabout Project. Item six, ordinance number 2014-123, to amend ordinance number 2013-48-75 by transferring funds from various agencies and non-departmental programs and appropriating such transferred funds to various agencies and non-departmental programs. Item seven, ordinance number 2014-124, to amend ordinance number 2013-67-73, which appropriates and provides funds for financing the school budget for the purpose of appropriating additional funds. Item eight, ordinance number 2014-132, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of fee simple interest for right-of-way purposes and temporary easements at the intersection of Brooklyn Park Boulevard, Dill, and Second Avenues, and Meadow Bridge Road for constructing the Brooklyn Park Boulevard Roundabout. Item 10, resolution number 2013-R278, to request that the CAO pursue the designation of Lumpkin's Jail as a national historic landmark and thereafter pursue the collective designation of Lumpkin's Jail, the Slave Trail, and Richmond's African Burial Ground as a United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization World Heritage Site. Item 11, resolution number 2014-R83, to dispense with the regular meetings of council during the month of August 2014. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to any of these items?
Hi, my name is Mo Carnage. I just wanted to speak against item number 11 because y'all literally just changed it. So instead of having two meetings a month, you're only having one meeting a month, and so then on August to have absolutely no meetings, which is my understanding of what this resolution would mean, seems like you're already getting a vacation, and I'm all for people getting vacations, but one meeting a month is quite a break and quite a lack of public connection and a lack of public accountability already, and I think taking an entire month off in addition to that is a really big step. And why don't we try the once-a-month thing and see how that works before we decide to not even have one every month? It seems a little bit excessive in terms of breaks from meetings, and it seems like we're not going to be able to get very much city business done. If our next meeting's in July, and then we won't have another until September, I'm not really sure how things are supposed to happen and how you're supposed to get good feedback from the citizens of Richmond. I guess I'd like to hear the reason behind that resolution. I mean, I'm sure it's because to give folks a vacation or whatever, but it just seems like with the new once-a-month schedule, that's not really necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Persinger?
My name is Silver Persinger. I agree with Mo Carn. After all, I understand you guys traditionally have taken the month of August off for a summer break. However, as she just said, you all, for the next six months, are doing a trial period of having one meeting a month, and I think you all should meet in August. I'd like to see that continue in the future, too, if you stick to your one-meeting-a-month thing, to have a meeting in August and not take the month off. The committee meetings still occur in August, and you all typically take off the month of December, too. And in the past, I guess you've had the first December meeting and then canceled the second. So you've already been doing one meeting a month in December for years. As Mo said, it limits the public's opportunities to communicate with you and let you know what's wrong with the city. It slows down papers that are progressing through the system slowly, and it delays them one month longer. So, you know, just like to say again, I'm against discontinuing the formal meeting for the month of August, and I think you should stick with your one meeting a month, like you all voted recently saying you would do. And, you know, without approving this paper, which, you know, is on the consent agenda, so I assume it's non-controversial amongst council members, who doesn't want to not come to a meeting? I think you should come to your August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in favor of any of the papers on tonight's consent agenda? Hello, Mr. Persinger?
Good evening. My name is Silver Persinger. I would like to speak in support of number 11, the designation of Lumpkin's Jail as a national historic landmark.
Number 10?
Yes, I'm sorry. Number 10. And to what the designation of Lumpkin's Jail and the Slave Trail and the Burial Ground known as Richmond's African Burial Ground, and the respective grounds of each located within the area of the city of Richmond known as Chaco Bottom, as a United Nations Education, Scientific, Cultural Organization World Heritage Site. I support that, and I also support not putting in a baseball stadium in Chaco Bottom. I think that would, as Mr. Jewell said, desecrate the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Allen.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kim Allen, and I'm here to speak in support of item number 10, the request to designate Lumpkin's Jail as a national historic landmark. The attention, the national and international attention that this will bring to our great city will extend beyond the sites listed here and cover the entire bottom and bring great attention that's much needed and resources to do further discovery, excavation, interpretation of the area. Thank you for your support of the resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Carn?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Allen and Silver just said. I think that number 10 is awesome, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into it, Parker, and I am glad to see that this is going to hopefully pass tonight on the consent agenda. We could really use the designation of that area, and I think that that's a productive, positive step forward for the city of Richmond, and that's what I think a lot of your constituents have been wanting to see, is alternative ideas that are productive and positive, but also supported. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, bring it back to council for any comment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you. I just wanted to address very quickly the item of suspension of the August meeting. I had some reservations about that myself, this trial that we're doing through December of one meeting a month. I think it is hoped that this will streamline operations here at the city and reduce the cost to have meetings. So I am supportive of that and did support that. But we do other business other than the formal city council meetings, and so I can certainly say that this won't lessen contact with our constituents. But we also have held in reserve the possibility of providing a special meeting of council, which we can do at any time with the proper notice. So with those assurances, I am going to support this, and I did want the public to know that we took that into consideration when developing this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Seeing no other comments, I'll bring it to a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. Are there any motions to amend and continue?
Mr. President, we have one motion to be considered. That would be item number 40, ordinance number 2014-78, to authorize a special use of 2001 East Main Street, a portion of 2823 East Main Street, and a portion of East Clay, Carey Street for permitting multifamily dwelling with up to 65 dwelling units and principal uses permitted in the B5 district. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page six, line one after the word two, strike the number 16 and insert the number 15. Page six, line three after the word shown, strike the text as podium-112 on sheet A302 of, and insert the word on. Page six, line four after the word ordinance, insert a comma followed by the text, provided that the uppermost story shown on the plans shall not be permitted. Page six, line six after the word not, strike the word less and insert the word greater. Page six, line seven after the word feet, insert the text for the stories containing the parking deck. After the word than, strike the number 14 and insert the number 11 and 1/2. Page six, line eight after the word feet, add the text for the stories containing the dwelling use, provided that the lobby and commercial space shall be permitted to be of a greater height as shown on sheets A101 through A103 of the plans attached to this ordinance. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment.
And just before we make that motion, to be clear, folks, it's paper number 45 that we're talking about, the Pear Street condominium project. All right, sorry for interrupting you, Ms. Kapow.
I'm sorry. I'll need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as presented. Counselor Hilbert, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Counselor Hilbert's motion to accept the proposed amendment as presented for item number 45, ordinance number 2014-78, and to continue the paper to Monday, July the 14th. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That motion has passed. That paper will be before you on Monday, July the 14th.
Thank you very much. And now, for those of you who want to hear the clerk read for about 45 minutes, we have reached the point of expedited consideration papers. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have 23 expenditure-related papers. Would you like to have those done?
I'd like to do those as a block, please.
Okay. And then we have one additional expedited. First is resolution number 2014-R116 to approve $500 from the council district funds for the 7th District to make a donation to Fan Free Clinic to support the Sister Speaks Empowerment Camp program. Next is resolution number 2014-R117 to approve total amount of $1,650 from the council district funds for the 3rd District to provide $750 for the Syndicate to Camp program and $900 for the City Dance Program. Resolution number 2014-R118 to approve $4,000 from the council district funds for the 1st District to support community green initiatives, tree planting, and house tours in the museum district. Resolution number 2014-R119 to approve $1,000 from the council district funds for the 3rd District to assist with the purchase of iPads for the North Avenue Library and the Ginter Park Library. Resolution number 2014-R120 to approve $722 from the council district funds for the 4th District to assist with the cost of the Leader in Me program at J.B. Fisher Elementary School. Resolution number 2014-R21 to approve $722 from the council district funds for the 4th District to assist with funding for the Southampton Elementary School Student Activity Fund. Resolution number 2014-R22 to approve $722 from the council district fund for the 4th District to assist with funding for the Westover Hills Elementary School Student Activity Fund. Resolution number 2014-R123 to approve $500 from the council district funds for the 4th District to make a donation to Camp Diva nonprofit to support the organization's summer activities. Resolution number 2014-R124 to approve $100 from the council district funds for the 5th District to assist the Friends of Foncelio Park with funding the cleanup efforts. Resolution number 2014-R125 to approve $750 from the council district funds for the 1st District to assist with funding for the Parent Teacher Association program at Albert Hill Middle School. Resolution number 2014-R126 to approve $750 from the council district funds for the 1st District to assist with funding for the Parent Teacher Association at Thomas Jefferson High School. Resolution number 2014-R27 to approve $750 from the council district funds for the 1st District to assist with funding for the Parent Teacher Association at Mary Munford Elementary School. Resolution number 2014-R128 to approve $500 from the council district funds to pay Print Markers Inc. to print and mail the 5th District's summer and fall 2014 newsletters to 5th District residents. Resolution number 2014-R129 to approve $900 from the council district funds for the 1st District to assist with the cost of athletic programs at Mary Munford Elementary School, Albert Hill Middle School, and Thomas Jefferson High School. Resolution number 2014-R130 to approve $1,500 from the council district funds for the 3rd District to pay the Richmond Public School Education Foundation, Inc., to assist with funding for Lynnwood-Holton Elementary, J.E.B. Stewart Elementary, Ginter Park Elementary, Henderson Middle, John Marshall High School, and Richmond Community High School students' student activity fees in the amount of $250 per school. Resolution number 2014-R131 to approve $450 from the council district funds for the 1st District to assist the Friends of Richmond Animal Care and Control with funding for programs. Resolution number 2014-R132 to approve $1,000 from the council district funds for the 6th District to provide funding to support- District to provide funding to support various summer camp programs in 2014. Resolution Number 2014-R133, to approve $1,500 from the council district funds for the 6th District to assist with funding for the Parent Teacher Association program at Overby Shepherd Elementary School, Oak Grove Bell Mead Elementary School, and Martin Luther King Junior Middle School in the amount of $500 per school. Resolution Number 2014-R134, to approve $1,500 from the council district funds to pay for the printing and mailing of 6th District newsletters. Resolution Number 2014-R135, to approve $500 from the council district funds for the 6th District to provide funding to support the dedication of Lewis Kane Park. Resolution Number 2014-R136, to approve $5,000 from the council district funds to provide a stipend and an interim to assist the council member for the 2nd District with research and policy matters pertaining to all aspects of local government. Resolution Number 2014-R137, to approve $600 from the council district funds to make a donation to benefit branch libraries in the 1st Council District. And Resolution Number 2014-R138, to approve $350 from the council district funds to pay for providing refreshments for the 6th District meeting on June 14th, 2014. Those are all of the expenditure-related papers I have for expedited consideration. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of those papers. Counselor Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on Counselor Graziano's expedited consideration motion for the papers as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers are before you.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to any of those papers?
Good evening. My name is Silver Pershing. I would like to speak in opposition to all these papers. You introduced 23 papers just now. None of them have gone to any committee meeting for review. The public has no knowledge of any of these papers coming before a meeting tonight because they are expedited papers. I didn't even really have a chance to look at this, but, I mean, for example, here's one from you, Mr. President, Mr. Samuels. To approve expenditure of $5,000 from the council district funds for the 2nd District to pay College William &amp; Mary to provide a stipend for an intern to assist council member for you, the 2nd District, with research on policy matters pertaining to all aspects of local government. I don't know if that's a good expenditure, if those funds are not. That's $5,000. That's one of the most expensive of these expedited papers. A lot of them are for $500, $450, $1,500, $500. Here's another one, sponsored by Mr. Agelasto, $500 from council funds to pay Printers Mark Incorporated, a deposit to print and mail 5th District's summer and fall newsletters. That's pretty typical council expenditure, comes out of your funds. Here's another one, similar, sponsored by Mrs. Robertson for $1,500. And, you know, Mr. Agelasto, he's getting two mailings for a deposit of $500, and Mrs. Robertson's paying $1,500 for a single printing of a newsletter. Newsletters, I don't think is a really effective communication. Here's another one, $1,500. You know, I could be reading any council members. I don't understand why this is happening like this. Are these funds about to expire if you don't spend them during this period? Why can't those funds be rolled over into your... And if this stuff is so important, these programs are all worth supporting, why is it you didn't know before two weeks or whatever that this was coming up? Why didn't you approve these expenditures a month ago at last month's meeting or something like that? This is just not the way to do business, and that is the heart of my complaint. But just for the fun of it, I'm gonna read some more of these papers. Mr. Bilalz, he wants to approve expenditure $4,000 for 1st District, provide funding to the Museum District Association to support community green initiatives. That sounds pretty good. Tree plantings and house tours? I don't really think I want my tax money going to support house tours. Here's one from, another one from Mr. Bilalz, $600 for 1st District to make a donation to Richmond Public Library. I can support that. To approve the expenditure of $450 from council districts from the 1st District to provide funding for Department of Public Works, assist the Friends of Richmond Animal Care and Control. I guess I support that, too. To approve expenditure of $900 from council districts. My time has expired. This is ridiculous. This is not the way business should be conducted here. This is not courteous to citizens, and who even knows if this is the best way to spend taxpayer money, because there's been no discussion or public information about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of any of these papers? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Pershing, I'd answer some of your questions. We are reliant on the administration to provide us the cutoff date for when council district funds may be spent. Once we have that information, we review what is left in our budgets and then determine where we should best spend that money. Each of the council members here made those decisions. These are the end-of-the-year funds left over from what we did not expend during the fiscal year. They're not allowed to be rolled over into the next year, so they need to be spent this year, or they are gone. Having said that, any other council members wish to make a comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the clerk for a roll call.
Council's voting on the expedited papers as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Ms. Newbill? Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. And now I believe we have an additional expedited paper.
That is correct. And that is Resolution Number 2014-R139, to urge the General Assembly of Virginia to develop and implement in the Commonwealth of Virginia a plan to provide more Virginians with access to affordable health care coverage and services, and to take advantage now of reclaiming federal funding paid by Virginians through the Federal Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act for this implementation. Protect the health of our citizens, save jobs, boost the economy, and help manage the cost of care for everyone. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Counselor Bilalz, will you make that motion?
Counsel is voting on Counselor Bilalz's motion for expedited consideration of Resolution Number 2014-R139. Mr. Bilalz?
Mr. President, just a brief explanation.
Yes, Mr. Bilalz.
I need to abstain from this for work outside of city council-related reasons and dealing with the Commonwealth on this issue.
Very good. Was it all other members of council that were patrons along with the mayor? Is that correct? Michelle, you're saying I was not listed as a patron? Oh. Madam Clerk, would you please add me as a patron? I must not have effectively communicated that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper's before you.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to this paper? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of this paper? Colleagues? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council's voting on Resolution Number 2014-R139. Mr. Bilalz, you have an abstain. Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you. At this point, I believe we're moving on to approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the May 27 informal, May 27 informal meetings. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Ms. Mosby, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on Ms. Mosby's motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. We're at a point now for reports and announcements. I did such a questionably decent job going through the alphabet the correct way last time. I'm gonna try it in reverse this time, and unless I miss my guess, that means Ms. Trammell, you're up first.
I'm not ready.
Okay, so much for the back alphabet plan. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several announcements. The first is invitation I'd like to extend to all, certainly residents of the 7th District, but residents throughout the city of Richmond. On Friday, June 13th, at 3:00 p.m., there will be an East End Economic Development Summit held at the Robinson Theater located at 2903 Q Street, where we will share, have the opportunity to share the economic development plans for the Nine Mile Road, 25th Street Commercial Corridor. So, again, the East End Economic Development Summit, Friday, June 13th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., Robinson Theater located at 2903 Q Street. Also, as we'll have a busy weekend, similarly, on Friday, June 13th, will be the kickoff of our Build a Better Block Initiative. That will convene at 5:00 p.m. at North 25th Street between P. and Carrington Streets. A part of that activity will certainly include a five-mile walk-run, but also you'll get to see the couple of blocks along the corridor, I wanna say, as a makeover in terms of what could exist business-wise. And so, we're asking folks to come out to take a look at what the possibilities are for the revitalization of those blocks on 25th Street. And there'll also be opportunities for those businesses who would like to locate in the East End along that corridor. We'll have information about grants that are available as well as low-interest loans for those who would like to locate along the corridor. So, the East End Economic Development Summit on Friday and the Build a Better Block Initiative with the pop-up blocks along 25th Street. On June 20th, the Get Fresh East End Healthy Corner Store Initiative will kick off the two more stores, two more corner stores will come aboard. One, actually Songs Market at 1400 Mechanicsville Turnpike, on June 20th, from 11:01. There will be a kickoff of the Get Fresh Initiative there. Actually, that market is in the 6th District. And similarly, on June 20th, from 2:30 to 4:30, at Fine Foods on 4904 Government Road, there'll be a kickoff of the Get Fresh Corner Store Initiative. This is Tricycle Garden as the lead agency, but a variety of other organizations, sponsor course, Richmond City Health District, et cetera, who've been working to address the issue of food access throughout our city. And healthy corner stores is certainly one of the strategies to address food access. And again, so come out and support and be a part of the kickoff of two new corner stores that have agreed to be partners in making sure that produce is more easily accessible and affordable for residents throughout our city, and especially in these two districts, the 6th and 7th, but we're looking to roll out throughout the rest of the city. Mr. Smedley statue, official unveiling, June 25th, Wednesday, at Jefferson Hill Park, and everyone is invited to come out. There'll be a potluck picnic, which will begin at 7:00. But this statue has been recovered and repurposed, and Mr. Smedley will be unveiled again on Wednesday, June 25th, at Jefferson Hill Park, 21st and Jefferson Street. So, please come out and be a part of that activity. The last announcement will be the announcement of the next 7th District Community Meeting, which is scheduled for June 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Peter Paul Development Center located at 1708 North 22nd Street. We will have city staff persons providing updates, but we will also have joining us Delegate Jennifer McClellan, who is our representative in the General Assembly, and certainly hope by that time we have a little more information in terms of the budget, but also the expansion of Medicaid and the Commonwealth. So, if you would, please come out and support those activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one announcement. The Museum District Association is hosting a family picnic this Friday at 5:30 in the park across from Albert Hill Middle School, which is located at 3,400 Patterson Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Saturday, June the 6th, Darlene Mallory with the Clean City Commission, she organized a cleanup with Oak Grove Civic Association, and I'd like to thank Darlene Mallory. We have some pictures of her. She had the group of seniors together. They were shredding up documents, they were cleaning up bags of trash, and also I'd like to thank Charles Lynch from the church, who brought some members of his church to help the seniors over there. And they had a great time cleaning up, and they were partying, too, I heard. So, anyway, I wanna thank Darlene Mallory for all of her help and all of her support, because we know that our seniors can't do it by themselves. Also, last Tuesday, Michelle and I had an 8th and a 9th District meeting, and also Parker was with us, and our police chief, and I'd like to thank all the speakers that were there. I'd like to thank Paul Manning, as he calls it, neighbor to neighbor. I call it love thy neighbor, where we can go out and help the neighbors. We had our police chief there, his command staff was there. Also, someone from the Criminal Justice Board, Rufus Lemming, that's right, he was there. Also, she is so very, very nice. Her name is, she's our deputy C.A.O., Dr. Deborah Gardner. She wants to help us in our district with some of the people that are in need of so much. So, I thank her for taking her time to come out. Delegate Joe Marcy was there, Delegate Betsy Carr also attended, and to talk about the blighted properties. It's not, it's not city council that can go out there and change the laws with some of these blighted properties. It has to be done through the General Assembly. Also, there was, let me see, I know I'm leaving somebody out. Code Enforcement, John, I think it was John Welch, very nice guy, very, very nice guy. And Mark Ollinger, and also, see, Mr. President, I told you I wasn't ready. There's another person from, oh my gosh, let me see, Mark Ollinger was the other guy that when it comes, that helps him. Michelle, help me out. From Code Enforcement.
I'm lost.
Yeah, I already said him.
I'm lost.
Yeah, the new guy, and then the other guy was another.
Mark Ollinger.
Mark Bridgeman, Mark Bridgeman, who I've known since 98, and who has done so much to help us on South Side. I wanna thank them for taking their time to be with us and to express, they listened to us and they heard a lot of our concerns, so I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. Our next meeting, our next 8th District meeting, please, please remember this, is Thursday, June the 19th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Satellite, 4,000 Block of Jefferson Davis. Our special guest will be Dr. Dana Bedden, the school superintendent. Also, the Honorable Derek Jones, our 8th District School Board Member, will be with us, and Mr. James Jackson, Director of Public Works. He will be there to hopefully answer some of our questions about these sidewalks and about the trash and different things like that that's not getting done. Also, Richmond Animal Control will be there, our police officers will be there, and our firefighters, and might be a few others. Code Enforcement also is going to be attending. Also, when I have another meeting with Mr. Marshall, I wanna ask him if we can talk about the 311, because so many citizens are telling me when they call 311, it says, in case you have an emergency, hang up and dial 911. They hang up, 'cause it's not an emergency, well, it's not a 911. So I think we need to have someone that will answer the phone when they call 3-1-1 and say, "Hi, I'm so-and-so, how can I help you?" Because when this is in case of emergency or fire, whatever, hang the phone up. Well, they hang the phone up. So I think that's, this is what some of the breakdown is, where we're not being connected, because it's, if you don't understand that there is somebody that's going to take your call on the other line, that says, "Give me what you, what are you reporting? What is, what is, what is it that is wrong?" And then that person's supposed to say, "Give me your name, give me a tracking number." So I want to, you know, talk to Mr. Marshall about that. Again, our 8th District meeting is next Thursday, June the 19th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Satellite. Please be there. If you have any questions, you may call my home at 233-7382. That is my home, my cell, my personal cell is 240-5050. And I think the citizens that do call me and give me, let me know that they have issues. So I really appreciate that. This right here is your free smoke alarm, it's the only thing that's free in the city. You better get one. You call 646-1526, 646-1526. The firefighters will come to your house, they will put the smoke alarm up for you for free. They will not leave it with you, they will install it. If you need one in your church, if you need one in your business, in your apartment, call them, or go to the nearest fire department, so that they, you can set up a meeting with them, so they can come to your house and see if you need, make sure they're all working, make sure they don't need batteries, make sure they're working. Also, last Monday, when I had to leave out of here, there was someone in my district on Gordon Avenue who had a house fire. She put her key in the door, and when she opened the door, the smoke and flames come after her. She could hear her smoke alarm going off. The firefighters were there within minutes. It was 21, Station 21 from Jefferson Davis, Station 13, which is in the 6th District Commerce Road, and also the battalion chief, gosh, I forgot his name, he was there. And he was so nice, he was so nice. He made sure that Gloria was okay, and he also made sure the neighbors were all right, and he gave Gloria some different numbers to contact, you know, if she had any, any questions from him. But again, I want to thank the firefighters and the police officers that were right there on that scene and that handled that fire, because it's a lot of smoke damage and things like that, but thank God she was not hurt and none of the neighbors were hurt. So please, please call 646-1526, and make sure you have a work-in-smoke alarm, because our President Barack Obama says everyone should have a work-in-smoke alarm in their house. It's free. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excited to announce that, and invite the residents of the North Side, especially those that live in the Chamberlain Court and Edge Hill neighborhoods, to a meeting to discuss the growth and improvements of Virginia Union University and the Chamberlain Industrial Areas. Virginia Union is the largest employer in North Side and really the hub of a tremendous amount of activity. This area in the study goes from Brooklyn Parkway, all the western boundary being Interstate 95, and the eastern boundary being Chamberlain Avenue, the east side of Chamberlain Avenue. Some, in addition to Virginia Union, the Children's Hospital is located in this study area. And we want to invite everyone to come out, June the 16th through the 19th, at Dovetail Construction Company, which is adjacent to Brooks Diner at 1620 Brook Road. On Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the project will be introduced and allow opportunities to discuss what you'd like to see in terms of growth and improvement in this area. As you may well note, across from Covey Field, the football stadium of Virginia Union, there are three-story residential construction targeted towards Virginia Union students, so we are having growth in the area. But as we, as I believe the mayor says, we can have growth by choice or chance, and so we ask everyone to come out on June the 16th through the 19th. There'll be opportunities on the 17th and 18th, and the 19th at 6:00 PM. For more information, please contact James Hill with the City Department of Planning at 646-7552. Again, that's 646-7552, or Lisa Towns in the 3rd District Office at 804-646-6055. The next 3rd District meeting will be Wednesday, June the 25th, at 6:00 PM at Pine Camp, 4901 Old Brook Road, adjacent to Henderson Middle School and John Marshall High School. We'll have a presentation by Morgan Baker from Housing Opportunities Made Equal, the 4th Precinct Safety Team, as well as additional information from the Department of Public Works on projects in the area. I would like to thank Dr. Newbill, 7th District Councilperson, for coming to our last District meeting. I believe she was well-received, and I received nothing but positive comments about how well-represented the East End is, and I can concur with that. So thank you, Dr. Newbill, for coming. Brooklyn Park Boulevard will celebrate their centennial on July the 26th of 2014. This area was annexed into the city in 1914 from Henrico County, and the association, the Brooklyn Park Merchants Association, is planning an activity that day, July the 26th, from noon until 4:00 PM, and we'll get more information as it becomes available at our next council meeting. But this is really a significant commercial corridor for the North Side, and so let's come out and celebrate our successes and plan for the future. Again, contact James Hill with our Planning Department at 646-7552, or Lisa Towns at 646-6055, if you want to get involved in celebrating Brooklyn Park Boulevard on its centennial celebration. Like to remind everyone that there is a 3rd District email blast that goes out at least once a week. If you want to be added to this list, please call Ms. Towns at 646-6055, or email her at lisa.towns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com, and we will keep your email information confidential. I'd also like to add, Mr. President, that the Education and Human Services Committee will be meeting next Wednesday, June the 18th, at 5:00 o'clock here in Council Chambers. We'll be getting two presentations, one on the report from relocation of the truancy program from the city back to the school system, from David Hicks, the interim director of Social Services and the Director of Justice Services, and the mayor's senior policy advisor. We'll also receive a healthy, excuse me, an update on the Healthy Start and Early Childhood Initiative. Ms. Rose Singleton, interim manager of this initiative with the Department of Social Services, will be on hand for this presentation. So we invite everyone to come out 5:00 o'clock here in Council Chambers Wednesday, June the 18th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. I'm going to slide over to the other side of the world and see what Ms. Graziano has to say.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, Finance is going to meet Thursday, June 19th at 3:00 in Council Chambers, and the only other announcement I have is that we will not have another meeting until after the July 4th holiday. I hope everybody has a great time at the fireworks and has a safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merzby, I'm going to go to you next.
The Midlothian 9th District Team Civic Meeting chaired by Ms. Alma Moore will be held on tomorrow, June 10th, and that will be at 6:00 PM at the South Side Plaza Social Service Building. It will be on the second floor due to the voting. Voting is tomorrow, June 10th. Everyone, please exercise your right to vote. There will be voting for the Clerk of the Circuit Court for the City of Richmond. Please, please, please exercise your right to vote. This month's 9th District meeting will take place on Thursday, June 19th, at the Goodwill at 6301 Midlothian Turnpike, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. I will be having my CTE Career and Technical Education meeting this week, June 12th, at, on the second floor, large conference room. I'm asking, inviting all that will help me plan our combined national night out this year. I need all that would be willing to please give us a call, so that we can plan a national night out for the entire district all together. Real quick, the Parks and Recreation starts the summer of June 14th, the city pools will be opening. June 16th, the USDA Summer Meals for Kids begin serving. June 20th, city residents have an opportunity to participate in the world's largest swim lesson. And on June 20th, will be movies in the park. So it's a lot of fun, family things. So I'm asking everybody to take your kids out and let's do some family stuff. Family that prays and will stay together. So let's take them out, let's do stuff. There will be a bullying rally, no bullying rally, on this Sunday at 3:00 PM. Our kids, we're going to have them out, and they're going to take a pledge in reference to bullying. So we're asking that if you can, please support that, and it's at Festival Park, and that's at 3:00 PM on this Sunday. I can be reached at michelle.moseby@richmondgov.com, and my telephone number is 804-646-2779. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merzby. Mr. Roger. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank everyone that came out to the Sister Sister event as well. All of the people that spoke, the Sister Sister and the Brother that came, that came out, and that came out to the event. Thanks to all of the people that spoke, and thanks to all our constituents that came out to support. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Agalasta.
Thank you, Council President. I think a couple of my colleagues have hit on some of my comments that I was going to make, so I'll keep this brief. One thing that I ask all city residents and visitors to do is when you're out enjoying the warm weather and the outdoors, going down to the James River, please respect our parks. These are public spaces, they're intended to be enjoyed by all. One thing that we see a lot across this country is a carry-in, carry-out policy. The city doesn't have that, but essentially what it says is if you bring something into the park, you should take it with you, and not leave any trace behind, which is a Boy Scout of America campaign. That includes when you go visit the fireworks on July 3rd and July 4th. I know lots of people will be out in the 5th District on both of those evenings. Or when you visit movie nights in the park, Music in the Parks, or Darkwood Dell Festival of the Art, all which is going to be going on between now and our next council meeting. So please enjoy yourself, but also be safe and keep our parks clean while you're there. I'd also like to offer congratulations to dads and grads. I always think of June. Father's Day is this Sunday. I'd like to congratulate all the fathers out there. We certainly respect everything that you offer to your children. And to commend the graduates, we've got a lot of the moving on ceremonies for 5th graders and the 8th graders, and then graduation for our high school students, as well as colleges and universities. So congratulations to all of those who've accomplished their education and moving on to the next step. It's a big effort, and it doesn't go lightly, so anybody who had supported in their effort, we thank you. Our next District meeting is going to be Wednesday, June the 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Maymont Stone Barn, which is at Maymont Park, located on Hampton Street, 1700 Hampton Street. And we will have discussion topics with representatives from various departments of the city, including discussions of community gardens, how to register as a city vendor through procurement. A lot of our civic associations are not registered to be a vendor with the city. In order to receive any type of a grant from the city, you would need to be registered as a vendor, so we'll be telling you how to do that. We'll also have representatives from Public Works to discuss the alley repair and sidewalk request initiatives, and finally, from the Department of Public Utilities, discussing the new city utility bill and any standing water concerns. A lot of people are concerned about mosquitoes at this time of year and standing water issues. So that meeting is this Wednesday, June the 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Maymont Stone Barn. We also will be hosting our next cleanup on Saturday, June the 21st, in the Uptown Neighborhood, and we encourage anybody who is willing to volunteer their time on June the 21st, beginning at 9:00 AM, to register with HandsOnGreaterRVA.org. And we will be meeting at 9:00 AM at the Visual Arts Center at 1812 West Main Street, and parking is available behind the building. So we appreciate all of our volunteers who come out to improve our community. A number of civic associations over the next month include the Bird Park Civic League, meeting tomorrow evening, June 10th at 6:00 PM at the Bird Park Roundhouse. Also tomorrow evening is the Carol Ann Civic Association, meeting at 7:00 PM at Unity Church, which is located at 800 Blanton Avenue. The Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association will meet at 7:00 PM on June 24th at the Woodland Heights Baptist Church, address is 611 West 31st Street. The Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association will also meet that evening, June the 24th, at 7:00 PM at the William Byrd Community House at 224 South Cherry Street. We are bringing together, rebuilding together into the Swansboro neighborhood next year, and we've got a meeting for residents of the Swansboro neighborhood to fill out applications. This is a very important meeting to fill out your application, and that will be at 10:00 AM on June the 14th, at Swansboro Baptist Church at 3801 Midlothian Turnpike. Again, rebuilding together, which was formerly known as Christmas in April, is coming back to the Swansboro neighborhood, and we are looking for about 50 homes where we can go in and make upgrades for our seniors. So that meeting is very important, June the 14th, 10:00 AM, at the Swansboro Baptist Church, located at 3801 Midlothian Turnpike. Council President, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Did anyone forget anything? Wonderful. Vice President Roberts.
I thought you had forgotten me.
No, I wouldn't dream of it, not in a million years.
Okay, we'll keep that promise. All righty, Ms. Samuels. We have a few meetings that are going on in the 6th District that we'd, on this Saturday, June the 14th, at the Greater Richmond Time Dispatch Office on Gray Street, 300 East Franklin Street. We will be having our regular monthly town meeting. We will have guests from the city administration, as well as our council staff, to talk about the budget that council just passed. In addition to the discussion on the budget and answering questions in regards to those recommendations that are in the budgets and the additional funding that was made available for some new initiatives, as well as increases for schools' budgets and several other development projects that are taking place within the 6th District. We will also have folk from the procurement office that will be talking about ways and opportunities to do business with the city of Richmond. The level of contracting that the city does to procure services throughout the year, we can find a lot of those types of developments that are forthcoming in the budget, and so we want to really be able to point those out to folk. In addition to that, there will be additional information on the Enterprise Zone Program, the CARE Program, which is a small business revitalization effort in several neighborhoods throughout the city. There will also be information on the Mayor's Opportunity Fund, as well as the tax abatement credit incentives to encourage development in the city of Richmond. So we really want to encourage other business owners, especially our small businesses in the city of Richmond, to come and get detailed information about how they can do business in the city of Richmond, this Saturday, June 14th, from 10:00 to 12:00, at the Richmond Time Dispatch Office, 300 East Franklin Street. On June the 22nd, which is a Sunday afternoon at 3:00, there will be a special dedication service held in the naming of a park in South Holland Park in honor of Dr. Louise Kane, who was a resident who has lived in the city for many, many years, and has also, in the Holland Park area, formed several civic associations and led a lot of community engagement, have worked very closely with our schools and the children that are in the community, and the Overby Shepherd School, and worked very closely with that, have also worked a lot with the courts and the juvenile justice programs. And so this is a wonderful opportunity for us to recognize a very strong leader in our community, Dr. Kane. That service will be held on Sunday, June the 22nd, at 3:00, and that's in the 1600 Block of 4th Avenue in the entrance to Holland Park. Also, we want to encourage families to get engaged in the summer camp program that the Richmond Parks and Rec offer every year. As been stated earlier, several of the council persons have even set aside extra funds to help support families, and so I would encourage you to give my office a call if you're interested in getting your kids into the summer camp program, and so that we can do all that we can to support you in that effort to keep our children engaged in learning experiences throughout the summer. And so my number at the office is 646-7964. And so my number at the office is 646-7964, and we really want to encourage you to keep your children involved in these wonderful learning opportunities throughout the summer. We're also in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Presidents of the PTA in the Sixth District, Oak Grove Bell Mead, MLK, and Overby Shepherd. I have not confirmed a date with that yet, and I would also make sure that the council representatives for the Eighth and the Seventh District are aware of when those meetings are scheduled as well, because we have an overlap of children coming from those districts, and we want to make sure that as we talk to the PTA Presidents, that you guys will be invited to be a part of that as well. On July the 12th, we are having a meeting in Holland Park at the Oak Grove Community Center, which is the new community that's being built. The purpose of that meeting is to give us an update on the master plan for the continual bill out of Holland Grove, what's going to happen with the Armory Building there. Also, we would like to be able to share with you information as it relates to the preschool that's being built on the MLK campus, as well as share information about the redevelopment of the Brooklyn Park Senior Citizen Housing that's in the intersection of Meadow Bridge and Brooklyn Park Boulevard in the community. And lastly, Mr. President, as you've already acknowledged at the beginning of the meeting, I would just like to express the condolences of the entire council, I'm sure, for the loss of Mr. Ray Boone. He has made a major, major contribution to the city. He has been the voice that, for many of us, have been the only voice that provided a free paper that was always available, always on time, you know, throughout the city, to help many who otherwise would not have access to the media and to the news to be informed. And I am grateful that the paper will continue to exist, but we have lost a huge, huge historian of the City of Richmond. And I just want to, again, express the city, the city council, condolences, and our prayers with his family and those friends and associates that have worked very closely with him. Ray has been a personal friend of my husband for quite some time. They actually worked together when they were doing the Afro. So he's a great leader, but also a great friend, and so we just want to express our appreciation for his contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson. On Monday, June 16th, at 6:30, the West Gray Street Association will hold their monthly meeting at Orchard House School, located at 500 North Allen Avenue. That same night, the Museum District Association will be meeting at 7:00 PM, as Mr. Belile also aptly pointed out. Here's the extra exciting one. The Second Annual RVA Streets Alive Festival is scheduled to take place on Brook Road and Broad Street in Jackson Ward on June 21st. Now, this event's going to close down Brook Road from Abner Clay Park all the way over down to Broad Street, and from both north and southbound lanes of Broad Street, from Adams Street to Sixth Street. That's going to be going on during the day, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The purpose of this festival is to allow residents and visitors to use these streets in different ways. Instead of just driving, it encourages folks to be active through running, walking, biking, and many other physical activities. Last year, they had an aerobics class going on in one of the streets on the Streets Alive Festival. There's going to be vendors on site offering health and fitness information and interactive demonstrations. This is open to the public and free. On Tuesday, June 24th, at 6:00 PM, the Robinson Street Association will have their meeting at Retreat Hospital, located at 110 North Robinson Street. That same evening, at 7:00 PM, the Carver Area Civic Improvement League will be meeting at VCU's Carver Community Center. That's at 1103 Marshall Street, West Marshall Street. Saturday, June 28th, is the second of four Saturday neighborhood cleanups targeted at the trash associated with VCU students moving out of their rental units. The first cleanup was a big success, and I appreciate all the volunteers that came out for that. They picked up, are you ready for this, almost 14 tons of trash in one day. Just incredible. It goes from Carver, Jackson Ward, Oregon Hill, Randolph, and the fan, basically the neighborhoods that surround VCU. The next cleanup after that will occur on August 2nd and August 23rd. If you're interested in volunteering, coming out with us and pick up another couple of tons of trash, give me a call, 804-646-6532. Folks, I appreciate you staying around. Is Mr. Persinger still here? Would you spin around and show how many people are still in the audience tonight? For us, this is a good crowd at the end of a meeting. We appreciate it. I especially want to recognize, are you all students? Are you observing for a class? Where are you going to school? VCU? And what class is it you're taking? Now you have documented video evidence you are here, so your teacher has to give you a good grade. I want to thank the rest of you all for sticking with us tonight as well. That being the end of the meeting, for all intents and purposes, Madam Clerk, would you please read in any new papers?
Mr. President, the introduction papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 134, to approve the placement of a dumpster and electrical power transformer within property owned by the city at 261 South 12th Street. Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, June 17th at 3 o'clock PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 135, to authorize the CAO to execute an amendment between the city and RMA for the purpose of extending the management agreement for Main Street Station. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 19th at 3 o'clock PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 136, to authorize the CAO to accept $29,700 from HUD and to appropriate to the Department of Justice Service for funding for tenant rental assistance for individuals with mental illness or co-carrying disorder experiencing chronic incarceration and homelessness. Public Safety Standing Committee, June 24th at 5 o'clock PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 137, to amend and re-adjain City Code Section 78 dash 112 for the purpose of determining the normal contribution rate, the normal cost of all benefits be calculated in accordance with the projected unit credited cost method. Governmental Operational Standing Committee, June 26th at 5 o'clock PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 138, to authorize the CAO to accept $10 million from VODAD for the FY 2015 Revenue Sharing Program for various projects. Planning Commission, July the 7th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 139, to rezone 2301, 2323, 2325, 2329, East Main Street from M1 Light Industrial to B5 Central Business. Planning Commission, July 7th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 140, to close a portion of right-of-way known as Platinum Road, located between Belt Boulevard and its intersection with CSX Transportation Right-of-Way. Planning Commission, July the 7th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Ordinance Number 2014 dash 141, to authorize the special use of 3200 West Clay Street for a multifamily dwelling up to 90 units and an accessory parking. Planning Commission, July the 7th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Resolution Number 2014 dash R140, to request that the mayor introduce an ordinance to adopt criteria for providing discounted water, sewer fees, and charges for low-income elderly and disabled customers, and financial assistance for plumbing repairs and replacement of water inefficient appliance. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 19th at 3 o'clock PM. Council Public Hearing, July the 14th. Mr. President, that concludes the reading of the legislation for this night.
You had a very good night, Ms. Jammell.
One hour and 41 minutes from the time we started tonight. I think I started at 6:01. Before the official call to order, President Samuels requested a moment of silence on the passing of Mr. Ray Boone, the founder, publisher of the Richmond Free Press, who passed away last week. And he has been a major part of the city. Started the Free Press about 20 years ago, and it became quite a paper, a weekly paper here, but dedicated to Richmond, and the gentleman will be missed. Then we got the appointments, reappointments, awards and presentations. The only appointment, or the only award we had tonight, was the commemoration of Maggie Wild Walker 150th birthday next month, and that was one, the only presentation. Got the agenda review. It was mentioned, actually it was mentioned before the meeting started as well, that the Libby Hill or Pear Street condo project would not be heard tonight. We'll get to that in just a second. Got to the citizens' comment period, the consent agenda. That took about 10 minutes before that was approved unanimously. Then the papers to amend and continue, and the Libby Hill or the Pear Street condo paper, that was amended tonight. It'll be continued until our meeting in July. What the amendments basically did, and I'm not trying to oversimplify this, but the one thing I mainly see is, it was what, a 16-story program? Now it's going to be down to 15 stories, and there were some other adjustments made to that paper. We'll hear more about that over the next four weeks, and we'll meet again on that and vote on that. There will be a public hearing on July 14th. Then we got to the expedited papers. They came in a block. There were 23 of them that were council, district, fund expenditure papers, and it took 10 minutes to go through those. Most of the time it was to read those. There were 23 of them, but they were approved by an 8-0 vote. The one expedited consideration paper taken on its own urges the General Assembly to develop and implement in the Commonwealth a plan to provide more veterans with access to affordable health care coverage and services, and that was approved by a 7-0 vote. We got the approval of minutes, reports from council, introduction of papers, and now we are done for the evening, and it's about quarter of 8:00. So a short meeting tonight, and don't forget, we will not meet until the second Monday in July, that'll be July 14th, for our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we'll look forward to seeing you then. Enjoy the 4th of July. Please be careful on the roads. Please be careful with fireworks. Just please be careful. We want to see you back with us again on July 14th for our next regularly scheduled Richmond City Council meeting. That's for Gavel to Gavel. I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.